February 12, 2024. I just heard the recording noise start, which is outside. First off, any changes or additions to the agenda?
I can add a retirement.
Add a retirement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Not mine.
So, our retirement is number seven after our budget discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Kate.
Good one, David.
Yeah, Chris.
Write it down at halftime. We'd like to see the banner lifted during the mail. So today, Kate's going to get a text when you're interested.
But can you reference that?
Yeah, they're lifting the banner tonight in the middle of the girls' basketball game. The girl's last year's championship, that national youth celebration.
Do we know what time it's going to be?
No.
It's probably going to be like 7:30, 7:00. I would guess 7:35, be in the middle.
Okay.
But Larry will tell us.
We can, yeah, we can, yeah, we'll see how things are going. And that's not really an agenda addition, right? That's what you're supposed to assess for the
It's a pause. It's a pause.
I was going to say it under so much public participation announcements.
I jumped the gun. Sorry.
Any other additions? You good? All right. So next, we are going to move on to approval of minutes from January 8, 2024.
I moved the approval minutes from January 2020, January 28th. January 8, 2024. Thank you.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none. Set these mics on. Okay, hearing no discussion, I will take a voice vote to approve the minutes from January 8, 2024. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Any objections? All right, minutes from January 8 are unanimously approved. All right. Next, we have the board involvement. So if anybody on the board has gotten a chance to engage with the school community, go to any events, drop by, bring any visits, now is the time to share those experiences and insights and any other good stuff. Oh, Rebecca?
Yes, I had enough, an opportunity to attend two capstone presentations. And both of them were science-based. One student who's been accepted to UVM did a presentation on being an anesthesiologist. And another student did a presentation on the experience of healthcare workers. They were both excellent. And it was, they did a wonderful job of articulating their experience and their, and their meetings. It was done quite well. You would all be very pleased with our students that are going into the world.
Fantastic. Thank you for sharing that, Rebecca. Any other board involvement of note? Right, I was able to, I missed my drop in a couple of weeks ago because, you know, it sometimes happens. There was a onlook there. Last week I was able to drop in and catch the middle school lunch and check out progress on the world mural that's happening upstairs, which looks great. I got to see, I think, the first day that they started working on that. So it's been really cool. It's cool to jump back a month and a half in and see how much progress the students have made on that. Yeah, it was good. I think folks were pretty busy running around doing stuff again. But I mean, that's, that's a school day and I got to say hi to Kate and Colleen for a moment. Yep, I mean, that's, that's the nature of it, right? There's a lot of things happening at once, but
That's nice.
Yep, it's nice to have a chance to drop in. All right, anything else? Are we ready to move on? All right. So, next up, we have public participation or announcements, and that is for items that are not on the agenda. Just going to read our public comment thing here. Public comment is not legally required, but we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns over issues. Issues through these meetings are
I did all of it. I don't know why it's doing it.
Through these meetings are board models where our students have to conduct public discourse and the board members in our community can approach controversial issues in a civil and constructive manner and can demonstrate mutual respect. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed for discussion. Please start by identifying yourself and what town you reside in and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Dave tapped Windsor, Vermont. Most of you know, but for those that don't, I'm running for school board. I plan on engaging for the next month with town people and voters. I'd like to say, I think that you should all think before you cast your vote, I believe that there's not enough diversity on this board. It would be good to have a thinker who is not the same as everybody else. And I guarantee you that I could do that. But my big concern is, and I'm going to talk about it, the budget's on the agenda. But at the last meeting at Albert Bridge, the business manager said, the school budget has gone up 30% in the last three years and that we're on an unsustainable course. And we are, you know, as a native, seventh-generation Vermonter, real blue-collar Vermonter can't afford to live here anymore. And the three or four meetings ago, I asked, it was saying, you know, the budgets were projected to go 20% and I was told that was all, you know, not true. It's still going on. The governor has asked school boards to reconsider, maybe even put, put off the vote of their budgets, you know? But I'm sitting here going to be listening and asking questions when the budget presentation comes up tonight. But this is not sustainable. Things have got to change. And nobody's against education. Nobody's against children. But we can't afford it anymore. Vote for me. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Any other public comments or comments from the board or administrators?
I would like to shout out our staff and people who go above and beyond every day. And I just have a couple of examples of our crossing guard, Sandy Becky, who takes on more roles when she's asked and says yes because she wants to help kids. And I would like to shout out our IT team because they do things so quickly to make things accommodating for our students. They had less than a 24-hour turnaround for damaged computer, checking with parents and all that stuff. So quick, so gracious, so door-to-door service. We were very lucky. And also our food services who provide for us sometimes when we don't, I'm saying this quietly, put the request in on time. They still support everything we do and they want to have good food and nice presentation for all of our community and anything, any events we have here at school. And lastly, our, our, our administrative assistants who are welcoming people here every day and answering the phone so kindly and so professionally. And we're just very lucky to have these people. And today, on a day where we have a lot of community and a lot of people needing candidates in our building, that reach really shines through. So just wanted to shout out all those people on our staff.
Share some of the leftovers.
The beautiful brown.
Thank you, Paula.
Welcome. I forgot to say bus driver. Mr. Tom almost checks in almost every morning. When he sees kids on the bus and has any concerns, another person checks in. All of our support staff is amazing. So I wanted to say hello to.
Do you have any other public comment? All right. So we will move on now to item five, which is student presentation of learning.
That is scheduled for next month. It's middle, middle level.
Middle school is doing a presentation in March for you guys.
Awesome.
I just shared the board plan with you, Davis, so you can see when those are happening.
Got it.
And Lori does just keep that on the agenda in case.
Awesome. So as we do not have that tonight, it looks like we are on to the main event, which is item six. Items for discussion called by motions if needed. And tonight, we opted to clear the pre-existing agenda, so we need to devote all of our time and attention to the budget as there are going to be a lot of changes happening and a lot to talk about. So do you want to start?
Yeah, I can start us off. So as you probably have heard on the news or read in the paper, there's a lot going on in the legislature right now. And as if you've been paying attention to board meetings, you know that our formula changed this year FY '25 to a long-term weighted daily average. Is that right? It's about five words that go together. Long-term weighted average formula changed. And in that formula, we're given numbers from the state and our actual, our actual per pupil count went up under that new system. So we gained some students in that new formula. And the new law stated that if we stayed, stayed under a 10% increase in the per pupil increase from FY '24 to FY '25, we would benefit from a 5% cap. So we worked really hard to keep our numbers under the 10% increase and we brought forth the budget. It was pretty complicated and Ed really was critical in walking us through it because because of the cap, you could potentially add some things to your budget and stay under that. I think all our, all our schools were very responsible in, in the budgeting. We, we did add a few, Matt Scottney added a roof repair that should have been done two years ago. So we felt that was reasonable and fair. But as you probably have heard, the legislature is considering removing that cap. And it's, one of the people can probably speak to it better than I, where they're at in the process. But if the cap is removed, it is going to increase our budgets pretty significantly. We did hear Friday, so it's been a whirlwind. So forgive me if I don't get all the pieces. But last, I think Wednesday, we got a list of schools that would, if the cap is removed, would benefit from a tax mitigation cents on the dollar. Cents on the dollar off the tax rate. Matt Scottney did benefit from that. We were going to receive an eight-cent decrease in the first round. The next day it went down to six cents. And then Friday, we got a new yield number, which didn't actually help us. When the yield goes up, our, our tax rate goes down a bit. So that's where we're at. I think the board tonight needs to decide if they are going to move forward with the warned budget that is currently out there or if they're going to repeal that budget and come up with a new budget for the community to vote on. And we just, just got an email about 14 minutes ago about how, how that's going to look, what the town clerks are going to do, how the state's going to help fund some of the additional mailing of the ballots and the posting and the, and the work that needs to be done to have a separate election as the town, the town election will happen on the regular day.
Can I just add a couple of little things? It is, it was felt all by board members all across the state that not taking advantage of that cap would be fiscally irresponsible. And so it's, because it was free money offered by the state not to take advantage of it would have been irresponsible, irresponsible. That's one thing. Another thing to keep in mind, particularly when we think about things like the roof, is that this first part of the session, they are tackling a school construction. And they're very concerned that people are going to move forward with school construction anyway because it is so dire. But the state does plan to come up with a plan for school construction. So the question is whether, A, whether the root can be pushed off another year or have, have short term? And B, whether that qualifies as school construction.
I did talk to Jim and he can put it off another year, but it does, it does need to be fixed.
Yeah, but if we can get it under that, then we should. Yeah. 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 So I kind of want to point out, that's okay. From my perspective, the reality was it would have been near impossible to keep this budget under a 5% increase looking at inflation, the rise of, the enormous rise of healthcare costs, salaries, and the dire needs that have compounded issues within the schools. It would be really irresponsible for this board to have put forth the budget that cut, let alone was less than a 5% increase. And I know property taxes are, are tough for a lot of different people. But at, at this point, I think what this board needs to decide to do is, you know, what's our next step?
Can I add something else?
Yeah.
Sorry, and I'm really, I'm wearing both hats at the same time right now. Another thing to keep in, under consideration is that if we do decide to revise our budget, then that brings the overall spending for the whole state down, which means that our taxes overall will generally go down. Also, that this H850, the bill that's in question, will almost certainly go through, will almost certainly take effect right away so that we can, we can manage the stuff. But it also has been felt by the House Ways and Means Committee that they can't make any more fixes until that piece has been put into place. And then they can add, they can add in other layered forms of relief.
Yeah, I'll add, Elizabeth, I've, through the VSA newsletter, you know, you've sent me links to Ways and Means meetings where they've, they've spoken on the subject. And thank you again for that. That's been incredibly helpful. What I will add to this, because it, it, it really is kind of a cordial, not, not only of numbers, but also of context. One thing that I would want to add to, you know, Bill, what you were saying about, about why we budgeted the way that we budgeted around that 5% cap, keeping things under 10%. I want to add as well, and this was from some testimony from the presidents of the VSA and the VSA, which is superintendents and school boards, that it's also important that the state did not give us an advisory about how to use that 5% cap, which I think is important, you know, at this point, you know, I, I feel like we need to kind of look at, look at the lay of the land and make decisions that I'm not interested in assigning blame to anyone. But it is, it's important to note that there was not, we weren't given an advisory like, oh, only use this if you absolutely need it. It was just, here's a mechanism you have this to use. Go.
And, and that is in part because, so Shelley Seward, who I believe is on this call, knows that I made a list of all of the complicating factors for this year, and there are quite a few of them. But one of them is that we don't have a Secretary of Education who would be the person who would issue that advisory and also the person who would provide the most updated information that we have on what other boards are doing because they are the ones who collect that information. We don't have access to that at the moment. And they've actually been, last week, received a letter from the federal government about it. So it would be really helpful if we had a Secretary of Education, alas.
It's been a year, I believe.
Yeah, in March last year.
I, I have no issues assigning blame. I'm not quite as, as polite as the state is. One thing that the School Board Association should have pointed out quite gratefully is many of the factors that are driving the cost of education in Vermont up are issues that are not local issues. They are state and federal issues. The simple fact that no one in this country has taken any significant steps to curtail health care, care costs in any way, shape, or form. The United States, I believe, is the last vestige of opportunity for pharmaceutical and in the health industry to gut the public of money. But I, I sartorialize. Also, you know, the state is long overdue dealing with the common level of appraisal issues that really plague towns and the simple fact that we are in, in the surrounding towns in this area are getting hit really hard because our common level of appraisals are, are so hot in the simple fact that we can't find anybody to do appraisals. It's just, it's not possible. West Windsor started this summer and nowhere near being finished. So I think that's really important for the general public to, to, to hear that the, the rampant cost of education is, you know, it's a multitude of issues. Unfortunately, it's very little to do with the, to local education systems, especially when looking at how to significantly change property taxes at a local level. You're often looking at gutting your teachers. The, the ability to, to, to drop it, you'd have to drop it to the point where, you know, you've got 64 students in a classroom firing hat or letting go hat your teachers to really make any significant difference.
And the common level of appraisal is good for three years. I mean, it's a three-year average. Our taxes are based on a three-year average. So I would caution people to remember that when we're, when we're thinking about the bulk of the tax increase. And I'll just add, you know, some of the cost comes from, the school is very responsible now for the mental health services of our kids. And that, that costs money. And there are positions in the budget that support, that help our students that and we don't have enough of those, to be quite honest with you. So that's another driver.
That was one of the things the Ways and Means Committee actually got right on Friday. They kept going on tangents and the other tangent was the calendar. They kept talking about the calendar. I went, what?
Rebecca is here.
Yeah, thank you, Davis. I, I, I think that for the community, because these issues are not going away. They're, we're going to be revisiting this again next year. And, and I, I think that the community, you know, I, I've heard Dave comment about this is not sustainable. And he, I hear what he's saying and he's right. It's, it's, people are not able. It's not that they don't want to. It's that they're having a hard time with these increases when they're, where men, where many of them, their incomes are fixed. And in this particular community, that, that is an issue. And I think that the community needs to understand a little bit more about, Bill, when you talk about the health increases in health insurance. We know that. They, they need to understand that, that, that's, that's become a burden on the school. You, you have, we have no way out. We need to deal with that if we're going to have teachers. You just mentioned, Christine, the whole issue of mental health. Our teachers are dealing with, with issues that, teachers were not dealing with them post-COVID-19. And we, we need to look at that. I, I really feel for the teachers of today, not only in our community, but throughout because this issue is not just in our community. Going forward, I think that I, I, I don't know if we can just say, no, we can no longer increase, stop the budget from increasing. But we need to keep talking about why is, why is this happening? Because it's, it's not the end of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Just to clarify, Rebecca, people who are on fixed incomes get relief from their tax, their, their taxes. They, they are part of the, what do you call them? Income sensitivity.
Can you say a little bit more about what that means, just for folks who might?
I don't know what the percentage of people who, so we have, sorry. Income sensitivity, so for, our tax system is made up of a blend of income and real estate taxes. And we have income sensitivity for people who earn under a certain amount of money. And people who, who live on fixed incomes fall into that category. And I can't remember what the, what the reduction is, but it's quite significant. And in Harlan, I remember that only one-third of Harlan taxpayers pays the full amount. And so I don't, I don't know.
I don't know what it is either.
Kate, it's you, Ben.
I know that we have the income sensitivity and thank God we do, quite honestly. But apart that, I'd like the voters to think about it. And this adds on your primary residence and owner occupied primary residence. So I'll use me as an example. I bought a little piece of property up in the Northeast Kingdom the year I graduated from high school. My tax bill right now with no brown roads, no power, just a little shack on camp is more than what I paid for the property the year I graduated. And it's not eligible for any income sensitivity. We're taking and driving multiple generations Vermonter's out of the livelihood that they've had for 100 years because they can't afford it. And it's wrong. And then in the private sector, I'd like brand new, I'm a contractor. I'd like a new truck, new tools. I'd like, I'd like the best of everything. And believe me, I should make the case that that would help me do my job better. But I can't afford that. I have to do the best I can with what I have right now. And I just started looking through the school district's annual report and highlighting some things that, you know, it's time for educators to start getting in the riddle. When you have 46 students at Albert Bridge and you have a staff of 26 administration and staff, that's not sustainable. And I'll go one step further. I was saddened to hear at the last meeting that Sergio was going someplace else. But I also was sad to hear we were doing a national search to replace him. The whole premise of the merge was if you have principals and you have the small amount of students we have, we should be able to take up that slack with what we have. That's a top savings right there that people would understand and agree with. But to keep, you know, adding more and more on the premise that you have to, because it's what's right for the students, take a look at the test scores. How much have they gone up? I don't believe one point. So we're adding more and more and more costs and the final product isn't getting better. Something's wrong and it's perception, I believe.
Thank you, David. All right. Any other comments or contacts or information on the budget? I know we have, uh,
I just asked for a quick point of information. I don't know if you can answer this, but do you have any, um, timeline for when HA50 might be addressed or?
Well, it's supposed to, I, I believe it was voted out of House Ways and Means on Friday, which means it's on the calendar now. Um, I don't know whether, I think they were going to, uh, do a drive-by in the Education Committee. And so, um, uh, it could go up on the House Board tomorrow, but it'll either be tomorrow or Wednesday and it will be, um, put through with, as they say, with suspension of all rules, which means that the calendar will be foreshortened. It'll go straight to the Senate. Um, it'll be on their, their Finance Committee. And then, uh, we don't know how long that will take, but they are alerted that this needs to happen immediately. So it's, it'll be a pretty quick process because everybody knows that we're, we're having these meetings right now. We have already issued the warnings for our budgets and we need to know what the, whether it's a real option or not right now.
There, there was one memo that said probably two weeks.
Yeah. And that's, that's just by speeding up all of the calendars and getting it to the governor and, and all of that it takes.
Right. Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you want to just state your name and what town you're from for the record too?
Yes, my name is Christina Dolan. I'm a Westwood supporter.
Thank you.
Sure.
I was just, so there's no chance that this is not going to pass? Is that what I'm hearing? There's no chance that this is not going to pass? So then we have two weeks. Are you going to get into this after? So right now we have to decide if we're going to take like restart. And then how long do we have to rework the budget before we need to rewarn?
So, um, the bill states until April 15th, but, um, I will say that we are bound by our, our teacher contract agreement, our CBA contracts come out on April 15th. So I would propose that we, um, post by March 9th. That'll be 30 days out from April the 9th, I believe. So that gives our, our HR person time to get those contracts. Uh, they, she said she could use, you know, they'll do a lot of prep work ahead of time, but, um, if we could, so March 8th as the, as the cutoff to count back 30 days, we'd have to warn by March 9th. Okay. So you'd have a few weeks to develop a new budget. Okay.
Yeah. So fundamentally, what that part of this bill does is it gives us about, about a month more to formulate a new budget under these new rules, understanding what the new rules are, uh, and then rewarn. So yeah, just about, yeah, three weeks to a month really.
So will we be asking the principals to come back with more? Like, how are we going to tackle that piece of it? Like, are we going to say we need to cut this much of it? Like, I'm just curious of what ideas are, what the thought is?
I don't think.
Okay, I was, that's, I'm just wondering.
My opinion is I don't think that we should look at it as a dollar picture. That's the same. I think we can look at the possibility of what we can do without in this financial crush and then adjust the budget so much. Another significant issue here is the fact that if it has to do with the SU budget. And so we're kind of waiting at the SU level to see what the individual boards decide. And if, if all three towns feel that they need to cut and rewarn and go out, I think it would be irresponsible that of the SU board not to cut, not to look at what we could do without of the SU as well. And so it's, it's a pretty complicated situation. Uh, so, I mean, that's, that's my opinion to move forward. See like, what can we do without? One example, can we wait another year on the roof? Uh, or other construct? One, one strategy is that Hartford is doing is they're, uh, trying to pass a bond for, um, some of the, uh, construction that needs to be done instead of adding that on to the budget. Their, their construction, uh, maintenance was going to be about a million and a half. Uh, and it's another issue that the state has is the fact that we're so far behind on building and maintenance that some of these things just can't wait. I hate to be in Woodstock shoes right now. They spent a million and a half last year just to have the furnace last another year. Um, so it's, it's complicated.
You know, and another, another thing to consider too, as we, as we look, because fundamentally, and I'll, I'll lay it out because I don't think it's been explicitly stated yet, but we, the choice that we make tonight is that we have two paths to move forward with this. One path is that we stick with the budget that we've already approved and already warned. Voters get a chance to vote for or against that at town meeting day and then we move forward from that point. Um, the, the alternate path is to rescind the approved budget today. And I believe, and Elizabeth, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I do this parliamentary stuff, but I think we also have to rescind the warned informational meeting.
Yep.
So we rescind those two things. We're, we're modifying the warning essentially to pull the budget from it. So we'll still be voting on, uh, school board seats, but I think that that's it for us in the town election, the town meeting day. And when we do that, then we get that period of time in that interval of just about a month, maybe a little bit less, we have that opportunity to look at how our budget numbers work with this new formula. Um, one thing that has been really standing out to me as I've been watching all these Ways and Means Committee meetings and trying to basically cram as much of this to my head as quickly as possible. And it's, it's complicated, but some of the difficulty of doing this, even when we approved it in January, I think this goes back to that December 1st level issue is that, or letter issue is that the, yeah, yeah, yeah. The potential tax rate that we get, those projections are based on partial information at that time. Then at the time that we did our, our budget under that currently existing, but probably going to be repealed 5% cap, it was a pretty scary number for taxes, but even that, it's a projection based on the fact that all of these other districts have already started to make use of this 5% increase.
Right.
So that's driving, adding stress to the education fund essentially and making those numbers shoot up.
Right.
Now, what I learned, I think it was in a meeting either today or one, one of the meetings, I caught every week, what on Friday, we get a new projection?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So one of the, I think one of the benefits of waiting is that not only, I mean, because those numbers are going to change no matter what. The reality is if we choose to stay with the budget that we've approved, we'll then be watching every week and seeing how that impact changes. But at that point, it's up to the voters to make a decision based on those numbers, whether they are comfortable approving that based on those projections, which again, that number may also radically change because once, what is it, H, uh, the, the bill, HA50 passes, it's been made very clear that there are other, there are other choices that the state can make and legislative action that can happen that will bolster the hedge fund and will help schools deal with this budget situation. So I think, I think it's really, really important to understand that is that we're not working with hard past numbers to say, we have made this decision on January 8th and your tax rate is going to be this number that has appeared. It, it, it is changing. It's changed every week since then. Uh, and the state is, I mean, legislature seems pretty determined to act after this bill to make some changes, which again, will, will make that number change. Uh, and that will continue to change after we voted on, on either of these plans.
And just to clarify, when we, when we talk about the yield, we're talking about all of the sources of revenue that are dedicated to or part, either fully or in part dedicated to the education fund. And one of those is the, um, the room and meal tax, which, uh, uh, is 100% dedicated to, um, the education fund, which was literally decimated this year because of the flooding. And so.
Because of what?
A lot of the flooding.
Okay.
Um, and so, uh, that's our biggest, our biggest contributor and it's, it's, uh, it's not there. Um, and, but they may be able to find other sources to, to put in there, um, for a temporary phase.
Yeah. And I mean, I heard that come up and I, you know, obviously there's no real point in speculating as to where that would come from, but.
Yeah, of course.
Somebody mentioned that, you know, like online gambling just began legal in Vermont. That's potential tax revenue. I know that like, you know, recreational cannabis, there's, there's tax revenue that comes from that. I, I don't know how that, those tax dollars are already being applied, but I mean, it, it is reassuring to hear from folks in the legislature that that is, you know, something that is, I mean, it's not actioned on.
I, my sense is that they're also planning to rejigger the education spending for, uh, tax formula. Um, uh, I don't know if they'll be able to reformulate it completely this year. Um, I know they had a study committee on it over the summer. Um, but that's a really big, um, project. And I'm not sure that we have any time to get it totally done before the end of the session. Uh, uh, but they might be able to, you know, rejigger things to make them even more complicated.
Probably the greatest factor affecting the, the unknown that's affecting us right now is as this change moves forward, there are several districts out there that actually did pad their budget significantly because they knew they had to keep it under 9.99%. And those districts are going to have to revote because that's, they're, they, they can't move forward. And all these districts that are going to redo their budgets is going to affect the main pot.
Yeah.
And so it's a complete mystery. At the same time, you know, my, my gambling personality says, well, let's just see what the town's saying. But, I mean, my logical brain kicks in and agrees with Davis is the fact that, you know, I, I think we should wait and be responsible about the process of moving forward.
I, I agree. And I do think that, I mean, it's not like we had wild spending. We didn't, we hadn't, I mean, we really only have control of our very small amount of, uh, the spending anyway. Um, we know, I think we all, everybody on this board knows what things we could do without for a year. Um, and it, it definitely won't make a dent in the other stuff, but, uh, uh, I also feel like we should also do our part.
Due diligence, I think is the term, to do our due diligence and look at it.
And the other thing that I want to bring up, because one thing that I know Megan, you had asked me about this a couple of weeks ago, maybe, um, but so putting on an election is not a simple cost-free thing. So that's a consideration that we need to be pulling too. But I know the reason I'm bringing this up is that there is a provision in HA50 that, oh, yeah, that specifically says that we can, we, the state will reimburse us for any costs that we incur putting on an election. So that, before we even have that conversation, that's something that is worth noting. We're not, we are not going to incur material costs by putting on an election. Logistically, it is still something that is going to take work. And I mean, depending on what decision we arrive at tonight, that's probably something that we're going to want to devote some time to figuring out and discussing with this group.
Point of, of, of election question, I wasn't saying procedure, but that would be completely inappropriate. Or if we put off the, um, budget vote, does that mean we have to put off the board elections as well?
No. It's only the, yeah. And the other thing, um, to Chris's question and also to yours, Megan, um, that is, if the timing of the bill being either tomorrow or Wednesday is affected by that appropriation, the $500,000 for the additional cost, that has to go through the appropriations committee, who usually meets on Monday and they probably, but.
We are still able to alter our warning though because of Act 1, 2023, which was, uh, that was another question I had is do we, are we sitting here on our hands? Let me do a special meeting and see if they do it and then change it? That isn't the case. We, right now, I think until this July, have the ability to, to change our warnings and remove, um, and I approve a warning.
Uh, Rebecca answering.
Rebecca?
Thanks, Davis. Um, uh, I, I, I also heard someone share that, um, we're not sure what the other districts are going to be doing. Um, and I, I think that it's really important to, to honor that because they are part of our supervisory union. Um, so, um, probably waiting and, and putting it off just to sort of be in line with, with what is it that they're doing, um, was, is something that I think we may want to consider. And Christine, I think, I don't know if you mentioned that with the HA50, the, with the reshuffling of, uh, these numbers, there definitely is a possibility that, um, how the budget is going to go, our tax rate will go, our numbers would go down?
Um, with the new yield, uh, with the removal of the cap, no, our numbers don't go down. You know, um, I'm, I'm anticipating that as time goes on and districts decide to re, you know, uh, rescind their budgets and, and create new ones, that maybe the yield continues to grow. I don't know if that's a possibility or not. I'm looking at you. I don't know if you know, but that would help.
I think the way, the way that I am kind of like framing it in my head is that we are going to have more accurate information and more actionable, useful information every week that goes by. Now, we don't have an unlimited amount of weeks to think about this. And I think Rebecca, you mentioned, um, waiting to see what the other districts are, are doing. I, I think the context in which Bill said that was before we start looking at the SU budget. Um, I do want to be clear, we need to make a decision of, for this district, we need to make this decision tonight. There's, we don't have the luxury of time on this.
I don't think we would have to, but I think it would be responsible for us to do it.
It would be very, yeah. It would be responsible for a variety of reasons, you know, not the least of which is the fact that we have been holding off on printing ballots.
Right.
Uh, and I think today you had told me is literally the last day or maybe tomorrow we send in the request.
Valentine's Day.
Yeah. And we're right up to the wire and as to when we can get those requests sent out to get accurate ballots. As we really, for districts that have already ordered the ballots and done that, there's a whole other level of logistical mess that comes with having to either have them in hand, go and cross off items. I mean, it's, we saw this coming and anticipated that we didn't want to be in that situation, but it also means that we have a real time crunch right now because we do not have that all printed.
Here's another question, uh, really along those lines, and that has to do with the annual report. Um, do we reissue the annual report as well?
It's all printed.
Do we have a big B2 on the second cover or what do, what do we?
They're, they're all printed. I, I mean, I can imagine like an insert with accurate, an accurate budget, but to reprint them is costly, I mean.
Yeah. And I think that's one of those costs that I, I would have to imagine. I think you mentioned materials in the bill. So if and when that passes, that's something we'd be reimbursed for. Um, I think when it comes to the rewarning, um, and I'm just, I'm not sure which of these many documents is in, but I believe what you have to do is you have to put up the initial warning and then put up a copy next to it.
Right.
X is out, what's not going to be there clarifying. You may have seen this, this is not accurate, this is the new one, this is accurate. I mean, it, it is prescribed to, you know, be as clear as possible. you know, be as clear as possible for voters. Dave, please comment.
I want to thank you guys for, you know, discussing this and giving us a heads up. I'm born in this town, I've been here every minute of my life. I'll tell you what I do. The voters are gonna approve any budget you put out there, whether you put it out now or you put it out after. I respect saying we're in a mess, we don't really know what all the data is and stuff. The problem's gonna be after the voters approve the budget. It's still quite a while before they get that tax bill that they voted for. Boy, aren't they gonna be crazy, no matter whether you wait or you send it right now, because that's, most people don't even know when it's gonna stop, you know? They support children, they support the community, they support, we want everybody to be able to read and write and be functional, you know? But they're not engaged like this and and I get, it's a moving target, it's very difficult. Maybe the responsible thing is to do the wait. But I bet any amount of money that the voters are gonna approve whatever you put out. I don't agree with it, but I think they will. But here's my question out of all of us. If you went forward with what you have presented right now and with the 5% spending cap, what would our tax rate be as of today? Was, I mean, I know that's a moving target also.
Oh, with the cap, it would be without the cap. You mean without?
Current numbers without, yeah.
As it is right now, today.
Without the cap, without the cap, okay. Um, without the cap, so.
Without the cap now, I mean.
I have both.
Yeah.
So I have it with the cap and I have it without. Would you like to vote?
And either one probably accurate, but.
These are accurate as of Friday and did, and reworked this budget countless times.
And thanks for being on top of this.
So with the cap, West Windsor's rate would be $1.98, which is a dollar difference of 32 cents over the FY24. And Windsor would be $1.87, which is a 36 cent increase over FY24. Without the cap, with the discount, that six cents I shared with you and the yield increase, West Windsor is $2.06, which is an increase of 40 cents, a 23.89% difference. And Windsor is $1.95, which is a 44 dollar difference from FY24.
So for business news, their last meeting said 36 cents and it would go up to 42 cents.
With the cap.
Yeah.
It went up 36 cents in Windsor.
That's what he said at the last meeting.
Yes.
Without the cap.
Without. Without the cap, 44.
44.
Yep, with the new numbers, which is the 28.
Right in over the tax bill, we both, yeah.
I think that's why we should do our due diligence and wait.
Yeah.
And see, because for everything Dave said, we want to make sure that the tax people can come back to us, this is why we did it, right? We did our due diligence, we.
I agree, I agree. And we need to also do our part to get that whole overall number lowered, I think, no matter what would, I mean, we can't, this can't, we can't do this. I mean, our family can't afford that either. So.
I will point out, I know those numbers are not good, but those Friday, the last time I saw them was two weeks ago Friday and they're better than that. So that speaks to the fact.
20 cents better.
20, I mean materially better because the numbers that we saw two weeks ago was like, we were saying that in order to get down to a 23% increase, we would be cutting a million and a half.
Yeah.
Like, I mean, it was like, it was on the scale that we would be having to do like massive decimating cuts to even get to where we were at before. Which one week of time has made that out of the case. We're actually almost down to about.
Almost.
Yeah, so that, I mean, again, I'm not, I can't forecast that trend, but it's showing to me that as we get, as districts are deciding what they're gonna do with this, whether they're reworking their budgets or moving forward, again, we get, I don't know if it's good or bad, we're getting more accurate numbers. And I'll reiterate, whether we choose to move forward with a new budget, you know, rescind, get two rescinds and then move forward with a new timetable on this, or go with what's already on paper or approved, we're going to need to be, have some kind of communication plan to make sure that, you know, yeah, we can't, we cannot force this information into the minds of everybody who is a voter in our communities, but we can make it as easy as possible and be updating folks weekly on like what what the outlook is.
Do you think we could, you, do I think you could, I know you could. But at the SU level, I think it would be smart to do it at the SU level, offer, you call the various newspapers and offer to interview with them, including what each district plans, whether they're gonna rejigger or not, and what the implications of those are and how, you know, what our rationale, what each district's rationale is for.
Yeah.
Probably different in every district too.
I think that's really wise. And I think, you know, one, one thing that I want to point out that we've done, that we did this year, looking at this election that we hadn't done in years past, is that we formed a working group of folks that actually do it. So again, that's, right now, it's Christine, myself and Larry. So the folks who might be paying attention to this anyway, but just, you know, making it clear that these are folks who for this timeframe are focused on that or, you know, taking on a little bit of extra work, I would say that, you know, I, to me, if the election gets extended another month and we're voting on something else, then, you know, I, if you need help doing those things or we need to kind of get back together and talk about this and do that kind of, you know, subcommittee strategizing on this, that's, that's important.
Yeah.
But it's good that it's already there.
We have a structure in place.
We do, structures in place are good. I love it. So.
My assumption is that we, someone would make a motion. It's probably unlikely we're going to, what would be the process, say, if we do put off the election of viewing and looking at the budget? It's not gonna happen tonight.
We'd have to have a special meeting.
Right.
If anybody wants to go down there, it's now's the time. I'm sorry. If anybody wants to go down there, it's now's the time. They're raising the banner. And it was just invitation, we can finish what we're doing. I want to talk to you about it after, after we're, the banner here, that's all right. Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like I would hate to recess this discussion right now.
Me too, but I did, I did my job.
I agree. I'm gonna go down and look at it as soon as we're done. I'm sad that I'm not seeing it go up because I know that it's a real, real honor to get that, put that up. But, you know.
I move that we that we, is there?
I got the language for it. Let's pass it to.
Matt, we're gonna find out what's he saying.
Is he burning?
Right, it's really good.
Okay. I move that we reschedule the Mount Scottney School District FY25 budget previously approved on January 8, 2022.
Second.
That's all good for them.
Sorry.
They got 100% but we're just gonna.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay, I mean, my right. I didn't expect any real to read this.
Budget, oh, sorry, okay. I move that we rescind the budget voted upon on the Mount Scottney School District budget. The FY25 budget that was voted upon on January 8, 2022. Second.
Okay.
Can I ask a good question?
Uh, yeah, discussion?
Does this include, are we doing just the budget now or are we also doing the warning? Like, is it all the same?
Oh, it's all the same, yeah.
It's the same, in the, in the meetings, the same part of this, the 29th meeting.
So we would have to rescind that, that is a separate, to rescind that warning, that specific warning, not.
Well, let's get through this one first.
Yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to be clear, whatever.
Nope.
Yeah.
All right, so discussion on rescinding the FY25 budget that we approved on January 8.
What a pain in the butt. That's my discussion.
I appreciate that though.
Thank you.
The teachers' salaries are all set though with the, with the unions?
They're moving at a snail's pace right now.
Okay.
Hopefully it'll pick up. Actually, the last meeting, we went backwards a little bit, but we're having very good meetings. I'm not saying, I'm not discouraging, but no, we haven't even gotten a salary yet. We've been dealing with issues on leave, which is something that we've put off for the last decade.
So it's an unknown. Never. And I don't anticipate us having it before.
Goodness, no.
No. So. I'd just like to make a pitch in favor of rescinding the January 8 budget because I think it's the right thing to do for our taxpayers, for our whole education system. And in order to have the time to do due diligence, as this is wildly flexible.
I agree that it's a pain in the butt and I hope, but I think we need to do our due diligence.
Rebecca?
I think you should do a roll call.
Oh, yeah. Rebecca?
I think that, as you mentioned earlier, the more we wait, the more we're getting better news from Montpelier and hopefully it will continue along that line. So I think our community and our taxpayers and our teachers and will appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. And I, I mean, I broadly agree with all of you on this. I think that it's not always clear the sort of uniquely difficult position that local school boards are in when it comes to these issues, because, I mean, if we've seen the last several years where the budget hasn't been particularly contentious, matching the cost of educational needs and mental health needs and general student, faculty, school, community needs with the tax, you know, capacity of our community, those things haven't been as strongly intentioned. I think that in moments like this where you see this sort of, I hate to use the word chaos, but chaos with the education budgets at the state level, it becomes really clear that we, that that fiscal responsibility part of our role gets highlighted. And I mean, I think that with that really at the fore on my mind, I completely agree, you know, we are being given the opportunity to have more time to get current data to see if this bill passes, because I, you know, I know that the outlook is that it is going to, but you know, nothing's passed until it's passed and until the second that that bill passes, we're still operating under the 5% cap, for better or worse, and like, you know, stranger things have happened. So I, yeah, I think that we need to use the time that we have. And, you know, we'll, we'll schedule whatever special meetings we need to do. I mean, we'll, we'll make it work. It is logistically going to be challenging. There's gonna be, you know, a lot of communications that have to happen. We need to figure out where and how we're going to have this election. I mean, it's, it's a really tall order. But, you know, I know that we can, we can pull it off and I think it's the right thing to do for our, for our voters, because I, I don't feel like it, I can't feel good about saying, here's a thing that we voted on under a completely different set of rules. This number is changing all the time. We have done nothing about it. Choose, I, you know, whether people are going to vote on that or not, like, I don't think that that is exercising the responsibility that we have been given by voters, so I would.
And I will also find out that we have voted in the last how many years to keep our tax rates artificially low by returning the, at least half of the surpluses that we've had to voters. So I don't know, when, when do we usually get?
I think that, and Ed can confirm, I think he, I think the surplus is already accounted for in the budget numbers.
Okay, okay.
I'd like to point out in this tough situation, Mount Scottney School District is in a better spot than the other districts.
Many districts, yeah.
Or the districts in the SU. But the fact that Hartland and Weathersfield are bookmarked on two ends, this analogy, I think you've all heard reused, bookmarked on two ends. One side by special ed, the SU budget, which is mostly special ed, and the other side by high school tuition, okay? And that really squeezes them. It gives them the very limited room to work within. And we only have one side of that book. And mathematically, even though it's not correct, it makes us 50% better. But anyway, it's just, I know the merger came up in an earlier discussion and that merger of West Windsor really benefited us in that way, West Windsor, in that we've had more control over our budgets, much less flatten up, ups and downs. It stabilized our tax rates significantly over the past, you know, 20 years. So that's a positive thing.
I don't know, I think this is the time to say, but my concern about having another election, I think we should, but is for the town clerks, like we're both in very small communities where our town offices are very strapped, so of how that will look and how we will communicate with them is something that I, do you have something already?
I'm gonna finish in the eyes.
No, I just, like, that is definitely a concern of mine, knowing that both town clerks having to put on another election is a big deal.
No, and I, I don't think we can underscore that up either, is we're not choosing the path of least resistance here. We're, we're putting on another election outside of town meeting day, which is a lot of work. What I was pulling up here and I get, and I will, this is, there's eight documents that I, that I kind of pulled out of all the flotsam and jetsam that's been happening that I think range from having the breakdown of the numbers across districts in the state that are getting this tax discount, like cents of the dollar tax discount, that includes ours, I'll highlight that when I hand it to you. But also some, some letters from, from the heads of the VSPA and VSA, from, you know, the headways and means, which explains the situation, because I, you know, just to make sure that we get the plain language versions out there in some of the contexts, as well as the hard numbers for people to look at. One of the things that we do have that I'm gonna include is there's advisory from the Secretary of State's office for district and town clerks. So we'll make sure that this gets communicated. I know Larry is our district clerk and he's been working pretty closely with Riley on
He has.
Town meeting day. So we'll continue to.
Yep, and I had a talk with the Hartland Town Manager today, just about this topic and how we're gonna move forward. So the first step is the board's need to vote on what we're doing and then we'll figure out the rest.
Yep.
Yeah. Don't forget we have a brand new town clerk. Correct.
Any further discussion from the board? All right. I will call this to a vote and I am going to do a roll call vote. Funny enough, not a voice vote, I am. So let's start with Rebecca, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Megan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, so the motion passes and we are rescinding our previously approved FY25 budget.
Can I make a suggestion, Davis?
Sure.
For the next vote, assuming you're not vote on the budget informational meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we need to hear it because.
That might be a nice night for a special board meeting since it's already in our calendars. And it's almost two weeks away.
That actually might be perfect, yeah.
I'm just, just, since it's already in my calendar. We still run the banner though. Probably rate that, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, you know, I mean, scheduling, we can, we can also figure out when there are, when there are times that we do, because we may need more than one, depending on how this goes, hopefully not, but, you know. Yeah, we've done multiple special meetings in the past. We've done multiple special meetings in the past, and we're like. Are we, for special meetings, Elizabeth, is Act One, is that the act that also allows us to do entirely online special meetings if we need to?
Yeah.
I'm not saying that that's what I'm aiming to do, I'd like to have a portion, but if we end up in a situation, which has happened, where we need to do like the hard 48 hours notice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In that space, yeah.
Yeah, but that Act One expires on July 1st.
Okay.
But they've also got a bill to replace it right now.
Okay, cool, yeah, just want to know what, what tools we have in our toolbox here. So, yeah.
I move that we rescind our annual informational meeting date.
Second? It's February, I don't know if you want the date.
Oh, February 29th, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be February 29th. All right. Discussion?
Was there a second?
Yeah, Nancy, yeah.
The queen of the second.
So I think it's pretty straightforward. If we don't have a budget going, people are voting on it six days later, there's not really a lot of point in having that meeting that. I agree with Christine, I think that might be a good time to think about having our first special meeting. I think, I think the timeline, it fits too, because we would need to be morning the following week.
By the, by the ninth, and.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Within two weeks of that, we'd have to be morning, so that would be, I would anticipate we'd want to be doing a special meeting on the eighth or the ninth, too, if only just the pop in.
Yep.
Vote.
Yeah.
Before that. David?
Can I make the suggestion that, I know you guys are on your social media and stuff.
Wait, I don't think, you can't make a suggestion while we have the vote on the table.
As a discussion.
I mean, while we have the, we have to vote first.
As a discussion, I'm starting. My suggestion is that maybe, in the old days, they had the town or a school newspaper. You've got all these books all over the place, you know, and you got a couple of them that's a sneak. And I know you guys will all play around on your computers, but I would suggest that you put a little leaf in your town school newspaper, so that people that are out there at the post office get one of these, are aware that some of these are inaccurate.
Yep, yeah, well, you know, like I said, we're, we're going to have a communication plan. I'll continue working with Christine and Larry to make sure that we're getting all of our bases, you know, not relying on entirely digital pathways. And, you know, as I mentioned too, the law instructs us to inform people with physical materials, so we'll be, we'll be complying with that as well, but doing as much as we can.
We'll get some X's on those warnings.
We're supposed to stay only discussing, that when the motion is on the table, we're really only supposed to discuss the motion.
Sure, thank you, Elizabeth.
Sorry.
No, I appreciate it. All right, any, any discussions on the motion of rescinding that meeting?
Sorry.
No, don't apologize, that's.
We want to do it right.
That's the goal. All right, well, hearing no more discussion, I will take a vote on the motion to rescind our informational meeting, starting with Rebecca.
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, so the motion passes, and we are.
I have a question, not about the budget. Are you continuing, or when are you having the people who are running for office, are you having that publicly?
So that, that is an event that Windsor Air puts on. The school board edition version of that is going to be on the 20th of February. That does not change, because we're still, the election is still happening. We are only pulling the budget part out and voting on that later.
What was that date?
It is the 20th of February, and I think it's a Tuesday or Wednesday, according to my calendar.
Tuesday.
So Tuesday?
Yep.
And that'll. It's reported.
That's how I know it's.
You can watch it later, it gets reported.
29?
It'll be 29 on the 20th?
Yeah. Congratulations.
All right. Well, I think that we have voted all the votes we need to vote about the budget tonight. And hey, I thank everyone for.
Is there any warning? Didn't we pass a warning?
Well, that was what I was going to say, is that shouldn't we vote to rescind all of the articles?
All the war.
Because we, we not only passed the budget, but we also voted on the articles that are on the warning. Shouldn't we vote to rescind the warning?
The warning itself? So.
Yeah, let's take a look at it and see what else we need to pull from it.
We voted on the warning, correct?
Yes.
Okay, which means we have to vote to rescind it.
Right.
Yes.
That's what, that was my question.
That was my question, too.
Shouldn't we vote to rescind the warning?
Great minds think alike.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's not going to hurt if we.
Yes.
We knew it.
So the only issue with that may be if you rescind a warning and then do a new warning tonight for everything that's not for the budget article. I don't know, we could meet the 30-day threshold for, for February.
The, there's five articles on it.
Didn't it say we, we could just take off?
On the ballot, when I read the ballot, I wrote shrink the budget.
But I thought the word, when, thinking, I thought that stuff that came out from the state was that we could change just the budget part.
That bill hasn't passed either.
Okay. Okay, so maybe we rescind Article Four of the warning.
Which is the budget. And then leave the rest then, because the other thing that's on the warning is borrowing money from the Capital Reserve Fund, and we don't want to rescind that.
And electing school district officers.
And electing school district officers. Yeah, so maybe, I'll, I'll, I move that we rescind Article Four of the warning dated.
Yep.
I know it's down here.
So I go this way.
Okay, sorry. I move that we rescind Article Four only of the warning dated January 19, 2024.
Second, and Article Four is just about the.
It's just about that number.
Okay.
All right, discussion on rescinding Article Four of our warning.
I'm impressed with the surgical rescinding motion.
Do we have a second on that one?
We did.
That was Megan, yeah. And just to, just to be clear here, not to get too far outside of discussion. So we have already unapproved. We have already canceled, essentially voted to not have our informational meeting.
Yeah.
We are rescinding the specific article within the warning.
Yeah.
And I believe with that, Article Four with that, the warning, because we're not rescinding the whole warning, and my understanding when I read what Emily Coroner sent out is that Act One is what allows you to do that, it's almost like re, it's not rewarning, but it's made, it's altering a warning while it's still active, so we don't have to worry about the 30-day.
So we.
So then I'll print the ballot through the House of Budget number.
Yeah.
And we'll go forward.
Yes, yes, do that. And then, Davis, for point of clarification, we X out just the Article Four on that warning, leave it up, but X out Article Four on it. I'm pretty sure. Yeah.
And that's what I'm, we're supposed to, and Sharpie down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put that out.
Yeah. The new one directly next to it, that's.
That's what they said.
It's in one of these many documents I've opened. Yeah, somewhere.
So then, well, let's vote on this first, and then we'll discuss everything else.
Any further discussion on rescinding Article Four of the warning? All right, hearing none, I will take a vote, starting with Rebecca.
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, motion passes. So, fifty. All right. So I think that we've rescinded what we need to rescind, and now we can talk some logistics.
Yeah, so do we, we don't need to reaffirm the article that's, I mean, the, the warning that's already there. We're just, you're just going to go around with a Sharpie and that's.
I think, I think according to her letter from the legislature, I need to post a warning without that article, and then next to it.
Yeah, so.
She, she links it out, I don't remember this, it's in the letter, but it's something like that.
Very quickly, just read it, you have one for me. So this is when we're doing a revised warning, and this, to be clear, is the memo from the Secretary of State's office dated today, and this is the advisory for school boards and secret attendants. So we're, yes. I'll just read both parts of this, because the first part, people might have questions about too. So, school boards who intend to utilize the provisions of H850 after it becomes lost, do the following. Want us to hold a meeting and vote on the H850 provisions when you receive notice that H850 is passed by both houses and signed by the governor. You should, will they properly part out meetings? If you have an emergency meeting, we are going to have a warning and emergency meeting. At that meeting, you're going to call a vote and issue cancel of previously warned budgets. This is saying what we've done already, that, as it's been explained, Act One allowed us to do that anyway. But this is, should, should boards be waiting, that's what they would do, but we've already done that part. Revised warning, if a district is only canceling the budget-related articles, the district will need to issue a revised warning, which Larry is talking about. Revised warnings reflect the decision of the district. If only the budget articles are being canceled, those articles should be stricken through or blacked out, so it's changed to clear voters. It should be clear on the revised warning that a vote will be taken on those articles before April 15, 2024. Possible will be good to identify the date the votes will occur. If the district is canceling the whole meeting, which we're not doing, so I'm not going to read that part. Posting, any revised warning should be posted in the same locations as the current warning with clear indications that it is a revised warning. The district should also provide a copy to its clerk. And then rescheduling, any rescheduled votes on the budget article or articles, reschedule meeting in accordance of a warning. Excuse me, and then the warning needs to be posted no less than 30 days. So that's the task that we have at hand.
Next to the other two. There'll be three warnings.
Yeah, it's going to be a lot of warnings.
Yeah.
So, okay, so I'll work with Lori on that.
Okay, all right, thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
So now, and a date for, yeah, so.
I'll lift my arm.
So, yeah, now we have a little bit of time while we're still on our budget conversation to, to think about what's. The 29th, I know Megan's not going to be around for that, so maybe there's another date? I mean, I think we can get everyone to know.
Twenty-nine.
So we know that we need to have, let me just pull my calendar up here, we're going to need to have a special meeting before the eighth.
Before the eighth, yeah.
Yeah. And probably no sooner than the 29th, I'd say, because I, my goal here is to make sure that we get the optimal amount of time to get good data on this, but also we're running it out so far that we're.
Yeah.
You know?
Waiting for.
Yeah. So. This is 29, and that's just about a week before the eighth, this is the following Friday.
There's an SU board meeting on the 26th.
There is an SU board meeting on the 26th. Megan, when, when are you, are you going to be back in town or available? We'll be back on the, okay, so you're gone for those two weeks, 26 through that.
The 29th.
Oh, the 29th. Oh, okay, so you're, you're leaving on the 29th, but you might be around the 27th.
I can try, I've got the Hartland informational meeting that night, and they may decide to do their special meeting, but it is what it is. And I know there's a, there's a something on the 28th in Windsor.
Yeah, the 28th, I'm not available. So.
I mean, what time would you want to do it?
I mean, we can, we can kind of do it whenever everybody is available, so.
Earlier in the afternoon work? I'm just trying to fit in two potential meetings in the same day.
Um, I don't know, do folks generally have availability during the day? To do briefs?
After three.
After three, okay, yeah, maybe early in, earlier in the evening, if we want to make sure we're not.
Yeah.
I'm writing the 27th.
What, Tuesday, the 27th?
Yeah, after three works for me. Nobody knows whether to do it working or not.
I mean, I, I feel strongly that we make it as accessible of a time as possible, not just to ourselves, but also to the public who may want to be able to either watch as it's happening or type in, or what, I mean.
Now, that is a good, a good consideration.
So they usually meet at six.
Have they set the meeting yet?
They are meeting, well, that's their informational night, so they haven't set it yet, but I would imagine they might, they might use that night, because it's hard to schedule it.
Oh, we're first.
You're first, so. I meet with them on Thursday. They have a special meeting Thursday to make this decision, and then they'll need to come back and discuss their budget as well.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't have to schedule this tonight, we do have some time that we can work on. You know, maybe what we want to do is see what the other boards in our SU decide, and how that might impact. Because if they, if they, depending on what they decide, that date might not be their informational meeting, correct?
Probably not.
Probably not?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
But if you want to set a meeting right now, I can just tell them that I've already got another schedule on the 27th.
Twenty-seven?
Or I could ask them to meet, I, I'm, you know, at five, and then one at six, or one at six and one at seven.
I think that's a little overwhelming for, for me, but.
Speaking of overwhelming, here's another overwhelming idea. I'm just being honest. So we already have an SU meeting on the 26th, so depending on what's on the agenda for that one, if we're able to keep that one on a pretty tight timeline, we're already going to ostensibly have everyone from this board there. We could just do a special meeting that kind of piggybacks on that.
What are we planning on doing in this special meeting?
We're going to talk about what, we're going to take a look at the budget and come back with some potential things we could.
Yeah.
Without.
That'd be a long evening, but not saying it's my first choice, possibility.
We start at 6:30? Again, I don't, I don't think that's really fair to members of the public.
And that day, Katie or Hern is having this in-person, the in-person specialized parents counseling thing that day, too.
What about the 28th?
The 28th, there's, I think, there's multiple conflicts involved.
There's a speaker.
What about when they march forward?
So Monday, March 4th, I think that that's.
That's meeting day eve.
It's possible, the issue is that we want to make it on that day.
Oh, but the town also does.
Yeah, they do it on the eve.
Yes.
Yeah, they do that in court. It sounds like the 27th is probably our best bet.
Let's just do it.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
What time, 6:30?
Uh, yeah.
So I'll have Lori warn it, and there will be a remote option for people.
Yep, and should we plan to do it right here? All right.
What was that date? 27th of February. Should you say 6:30?
Yep, 6:30, Room 210, so one's your school, so we'll warn that.
Wait, shouldn't it be over, aren't we going ping-ponging by four?
Right, you are.
That'll be in Albert's.
So, in the library?
Yep.
Yes, library, cool.
And we're still on for the 29th? No.
No, that, that got rescinded. So no more 29th, we're doing the 27th now, and we're going to decide on what our budget looks like. I don't believe there's any, there are any more votes on this, any other logistics that we want to talk about while we're all on this lovely rope together, or are we ready to?
Right. If for some reason, I'm sorry, if for some reason Hartland doesn't go in this direction, and they're having that meeting that night, I'm just going to let you know.
Okay.
And I won't be able to be at both.
We'll cross that bridge when we get to, and I'm not, I'm not worried about it, and we'll, we'll.
You can just flip a coin for me.
Okay.
But you can't walk on water?
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out if that comes up.
I, I imagine they're going to.
I, I imagine they're going to take a similar path, but.
Um, and I was just curious, is this the time where you guys give us feedback about your priorities, what you would like us to be considering when we're thinking about what to do differently? I didn't hear that. I'm just wondering, is this is the time that you guys share with us what you would like us to do in a different manner? Like your priorities as we're thinking about what we would do for a changed budget?
Good question.
I think looking at what was added this year, even though everything was really required. But in the new budget reality, that's probably what I feel will be the first thing we would look at.
So, that, those would be things like the, a base to the auditorium, the roof, those are two, those were two big ticket things. Um.
And I'm, I, I think, you know, I'm thinking largely along the same lines, Bill, I think that looking at the additions that were made, that's the first place I given how the trend seems to be moving with these numbers right now, uh, and I mean, we'll, we'll know in a week, and what I would hope is as you're talking about this, we'll also be kind of paying attention to where those are at.
Yeah.
Um, but I think any, anything that was truly added, um, I know that one of the, one of the uniquely tough things, because again, this is like a perfect storm of an issue with yield being affected and CLA being out of whack, and then one-twenty-seven, but also where our, our S R fund is inspiring.
Yes.
Um, and that's something that needs to be factored in, so I my opinion is that I would like to, to see positions that are transitioning from S R funded to funded positions by us. I would want those to stay, because I don't see those as being true additions, they're continuing existing services, um, and I, I don't, I wouldn't want to see us starting at a place where we are discontinuing services that are happening.
I I brought that up, because I have a faint memory of some position additions.
Yeah, there was the Spanish teacher.
Yes.
And.
Yeah, there's some F T U in there.
And the health teacher is still in there, and that's not an addition, but, uh, to recall, we reallocated that money this year to fund our S A, our part-time SAP and our planning room supervisor.
Yes.
So, um, it's not a new position, it's an unfilled, it's, it's been an unfilled position for two years.
It's our second full year.
Yeah, so, but we did use those funds to try to support students in other ways. So.
I'm not saying that's the direction we'll go, but I think those are the first things that probably should come up as part of the discussion.
Well, we have a list of all the things that we've added.
Yeah. Sure, um. Actually, it was in the, it was in your Google chat, there was a point six math.
Point six math.
Flex teacher at ABS that was added. Spanish teacher in the elementary middle here.
Yeah, the packet, the packet from our last meeting, if you go to that folder area, that'll be.
Thank you. And that's really it, to be honest, except for the S R funded positions.
Really wasn't a lot, and I mean, I think it's been said already by a few folks, but I mean, we've I am always impressed by how, how we are able to meet these services while being, making physically responsible choices, again, this, the climate that we're operating in right now, I don't think is reflective of the, the care that our administration and, and everybody on this board puts into making sure that we're making, uh, wise financial decisions for our, our district and for our voters.
I think another important thing to point out is that and I, I've heard this from multiple sources, as you may all realize, I have a lot of contacts in the educational world. But I feel strongly that this district has been damaged over the years because it has been under administrated. And so, I would be remiss to cut back on administrative positions just for that fact, is that the staff, the buildings, the students really require leadership at this time. Uh, and, and leadership requires people who are leaders. So, that's.
And to be honest, I, I can't imagine this building, and I, I heard Dave, I heard Dave, um, talking about that, and just the, the work that the administrators do every day, I can't, I can't imagine not having one, they're, they're already taxed beyond.
For those of us who watch, uh, read schools brand religiously, elementary schools across the state are adding assistant principals left and right
Yeah.
because of that need.
Uh, Rebecca?
I, I just want to, um, piggyback on what Bill is commenting regarding administrators, and, and I also, you know, heard, um, um, I know that Sergio is, is moving on, um, but I also know that we really have, um, thought hard about the value and importance of being able to have that middle school principal, that elementary school and the high school, they all serve very, very, very different purposes. And, um, um, and, and, and now that we have it, I think that it is so important to hold on to that, um, and, um, I, I, yeah, I, I don't think that, it's just developmentally, not only important, but just very necessary for our kids.
And thanks, Rebecca. Any other, other budget thoughts before we?
No, we've got a good direction, we'll come back on the twenty-seventh with, um, some concrete things, and then.
All right, and in the meantime, I'll, I'll be in touch with you and Larry, and we can, I think, get on some kind of communication, play one down, make sure that we're.
Good idea.
Yep. More certain. All right, well, thank you again, I know it's gonna run a little longer, but I, you know, thanks again for community folks who are here, and the board, and then, you know, our administrators, everybody for, you know, engaging in this, it's really complicated and not fun, and it is a pain in the butt, Bill, I agree with you, um, but I think that we are, uh, moving in a responsible direction here, and I, I really appreciate that from all y'all. So, we have made it to, oh, our addition, so item number seven is a retirement.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sad and happy to announce, like, Andy toughs has decided to retire.
What?
And I know, it's like now I have to come to life without my dad.
What?
Are you kidding? No, I mean, it's fun.
Um, you said, you said.
Enjoy to enjoy life without a full-time job.
Well, yeah, it's, that's all mind-blowing to hear, I mean, I.
End of an era.
I.
I will say that I did immediately go get numbers and see if we could function without replacing, uh, social studies teachers, and, and we can't.
Yeah, I, yeah, I wouldn't imagine so, but I appreciate you checking.
Yeah.
Wow. Yeah, how, how long has Andy been?
Thirty-four. Maybe, I think, thirty-five.
Wow, really?
Yeah.
I think he spent his whole teaching career here.
I, I, I mean, that would, that would make sense, I mean, I had him, he was my history teacher when I was in eighth grade.
Mr. Tufts is the, um, bridge to the retired staff, and, and the large gap of people not hired between that veteran retired staff when Mr. Tufts came on, and then there was.
Nineteen ninety he came up.
And then there was another large gap before new teachers came on, so he is the historian of our school, and he carries a lot of knowledge of the previous staff and the traditions and how things have been done, and he will be swirling this, and we have to tap everything, all of his brain cells on some of the history before he leaves us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very, very valuable, um, staff member, and our, he is our longest veteran staff.
I think he's the last teacher that worked with my father.
So he didn't tell the students.
Because I came on after your dad retired, and there was no.
No, he doesn't want to be seen. Yeah, but he also understands the budget process and.
I appreciate that, because I would have gone straight home and.
And then, I love, I love Jesse, because then everyone would. The kids don't know yet, that's how bad, and, uh, did you announce to the staff yet? Yeah, I mean, I told them that, I was gonna tell the board tonight, and then we were going to, uh, post it. The post is ready to go, let's, I mean, you guys have to accept it.
Well, yeah.
If you want to make a motion to not allow it.
Yes.
I don't even know if we have to vote on it.
I mean, I, I don't know what your other option.
Yeah, with regrets, yeah, I mean, I, I'll tell you, when I was in eighth grade history class with Andy, I, with Mr. Tufts, I would not have imagined, uh, I would be on the board accepting his his retirement notice.
Wow.
Uh, yeah. That's crazy. All right, well, I will accept a motion to accept with regrets the retirement of Mr. Andy Tufts.
So moved. Two seconds.
With congratulations as well.
And congratulations, yeah.
A lot of gratitude.
Lot of gratitude.
And envy.
Lot of emotions, but, yeah, thank you, Mr. Tufts, wow. It's, uh, next time I see him, I gotta chat with him.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'm not hearing any further discussion, so. Well, uh, I think we can just do a voice vote on this one.
Yeah.
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion passes, all the best to Andy Tufts and his retirement. So, we have made it to setting our next agenda. I'm assuming a lot of stuff that we kicked off this one to make sure we had budget time has got
Yeah.
pop up, and then third, what is it, the eleventh of?
That'll be on March eleven.
Yeah, March eleven. And also organizational meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll do that first.
Yep.
And then, um, we'll just move that agenda that was gonna be tonight over to March.
And that will be here, since we're doing the special meeting here.
Yeah. Will be here.
And Christine, can, do you have it in front of you, can you just know what, what's being moved from there, or if it's, if it's not Andy at times? Just on a jog by memory.
We were going to today talk about, um, hiring practices, expected openings, and we're gonna do that at the SU board meeting on the twenty-eighth, so we'll, we'll show that information again, um. We were gonna do retirements, but we already did those, and it was a little more thin, let me just see.
You might want to table a couple of policies we're looking at if.
We can do that.
If we're gonna talk about what happens in the three districts. Or all three districts I gotta meet before.
Yes, all three will meet this week.
We should probably.
Okay.
Free up at least sometime.
Okay. Um, there was a question about, um, I think, uh, what students are doing after graduation, would that be?
Those grad plans?
Those grad plans occasionally, would that be timely in March, or do you need till April? Um, ideally, I need to met, but I could do it in April. They're not, they're, it's not like.
Right.
It's not like when we, I don't know, forty-five, forty-six years old, like, it's not, the timelines are rolling, there's no Yeah. set plan, but I can report in April. Information I have.
Are we getting a hundred days yet?
Tomorrow, you know when I fill that out, four o'clock that day, you know what I have, a seven-year-old. I was like, oh, too bad, so sad. I don't know what to tell you, but my mom had a great week, so. It always works out. So we do, um, next month, uh, along with the reorganization, if we don't have a school district clerk, we have to appoint one. Like, we appointed Larry this year, not at the March meeting, but just something to think about.
Yeah, we can bring it up with them at some point, see if we want to stay on.
You think could be most school presentation to that list?
That, that'll be the student, because we need to learn, yeah, next month. So. Um, and, and hopefully no more retirements, but, so, um, after high school plans. No, that, you said April for that, right?
So, we'll hold on to that, so hiring, hiring practices, openings, and possibly retirements.
Okay.
That's super good. All right, maybe else, the next agenda. Speaking now, all right. Well, uh, any need for an executive session tonight? I don't have any. All right, well, in that case, uh, I will accept a motion to adjourn this meeting of the Madison County School District Board at eight sixteen P M.
So moved. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm not gonna do the rest, we're all.